Hearing none, Dr. McGee. Let's go into recognition and announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My recognitions and announcements this evening are going to be relatively short. I have one. I am pleased to introduce Ms. Lauren Windsor as the Assistant Principal for Student Support Services at Windsocket High School. Ms. Windsor has an extensive background servicing students with special needs. She graduated from Rhode Island College with a Bachelor of Science degree in elementary and special education. She is highly qualified and certified by RIDE as a building-level administrator. Ms. Windsor has more than 15 years of experience working with children and youth with educational, social-emotional, and behavioral issues. She's worked in both the public and private sectors as a pass worker, a paraprofessional, a special education teacher, and a special education coordinator. Her experience across a variety of settings has provided her with direct knowledge of the programs and services across educational and behavioral continuums, both in and out of districts. Most recently, she worked for the district as a special education chairperson at the middle and secondary levels. As the special education coordinator and chairperson for the last six years, Ms. Windsor participated in the training of special education teachers and paraprofessionals in the areas of curriculum, employment, first, alternate assessment, and transition services. She coordinated staffing based on student needs and observed and evaluated teachers. Based on her record of accomplishments, I'm very happy to present as the new Assistant Principal for Student Support Services at Windsocket High School, Ms. Lauren Windsor. She is here. Yes, she is.
Please stand.
With that, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my recognitions and announcements this evening.
Dr. McGee, since on our agenda, we have an appointment for the Assistant Principal of the ninth-grade academy. Can you give us the status of that position?
Yes, yes. So, we had a candidate, and that candidate withdrew his application. Well, we actually had two interviews with the person, and this person decided that this was not the right step for him. So unfortunately, we will continue to advertise that positions advertised. There are actually two Assistant Principal positions at the high school that are currently advertised, and we're looking to hopefully fill it with a permanent administrator, or we could potentially fill it on an interim basis. So we're looking, we have both of those options are available right now, and hopefully at the next meeting, I'll have a person to either bring forward permanently or a person to bring forward in the interim positions.
Any questions, comments for Dr. McGee? Then I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the recognitions and announcements. Do we have a second? Second by Mrs. Costa. Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas. Mrs. Costa. Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the September 8, 2021 closed session meeting minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leclerc. Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas. Mrs. Costa. Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to approve the September 8, 2021 open meeting minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke. Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas. Mrs. Costa. Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
We will now move to the consent agenda, where I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the consent agenda. Do we have a second? Second by Mrs. Costa. Does any member of the committee want to take anything out of the consent agenda to for further discussion? Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa. Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Dr. McGee, it's your turn again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to begin with personnel matters. I just wanted to report to the committee that we have added a total of five certified positions, teaching positions, in the district since our last school committee meeting. We've also added a total of three non-certified positions, which are primarily in the areas of teacher assistance or personal care assistance for the Special Education Department. And we have 26 internal staff that we have hired for stipends. So it's positions that are typically beyond the school day or, in some instances, during the school day as well. So we have a total of 26 there, and that ranges anywhere from our department heads at the high school to our ESL study pals throughout the district. So very happy that we're continuing to work really hard to fill as many of our open positions as we possibly can in the district. The second agenda item, our principal walk. So I want to talk a little bit about our principal walks with the committee this evening. The committee may be aware that a few years ago, we started a partnership with a gentleman from an organization called Teaching and Learning Alliance, and that's a, they're two gentlemen who are retired superintendents, and they've been working with us in areas around our district improvement plan, our district strategic plan. They've also been working with us on our principal and administrator walkthroughs, or learning walks. So basically, a learning walk is when a group of typically administrators, in some cases we add other teaching staff to that, and we go in and we look for certain elements of teaching and learning. So for example, we've been looking at questioning techniques, you know, whether the questioning techniques are high-level questions in classrooms. We're also looking at how students are interacting with one another, especially since the pandemic. Now that we're back, we really want to stress the importance of students interacting with one another, you know, in our classrooms. And the third area is assessments, and you know what types of assessments are our teachers and staff using. So those are the three look fours that we've been working on for the last year. So Dr. Holt and I are also working, the two of us, with the Teaching and Learning Alliance, with Mr. Borstel, Scott Borstel, around our instructional leadership. And in the conversations and the planning that we've had with them over the last six months, is we made the decision internally that in addition to the learning walks that are the sort of official learning walks that are conducted at each school during the course of the year, that Dr. Holt, Mrs. DiRiso, Ms. Agia, Mrs. Morell, and I would conduct our own weekly principal walks. So what we're doing is every Thursday, we're setting aside from, basically from 8:00 to noon time, and we started two weeks ago. We went to the high school with Mr. Agio, and last Thursday, we were at Coleman with Ms. Cackness. And we basically just go into classrooms and we, you know, we look for the look fours that we've established as a district, and once we're done, we get into as many classrooms as we can. A little challenging at the high school because it's so large, but we were there for a good four hours. And then at Coleman, we got into every single classroom, and when we finish, we debrief and we provide feedback to the building principal around those areas and other areas, basically looking at, you know, we make observations about the school's climate, the environment, and the teaching and learning. And it's a great opportunity for both our principals, and in some cases, assistant principals are a part of this process, and for us as district leaders to have a better understanding and knowledge of what's happening with respect to teaching and learning in our classrooms. And it's a way for us to really develop our own skill set and leadership qualities, again, as well as our principals. And it's something that we're going to be doing throughout this year. So every Thursday, we're going to be going to a different school with a different principal. And, you know, it really, this process is really, is anchored in feedback that we're going to be providing to our building principals, and it's having that, those conversations about good practice, best practice, you know, in terms of teaching and learning. So we're really excited about those. I look forward later in the year as we conduct even more of these to, you know, to come back with some updates and more information for the committee about these. And the good part of this, and we heard, we've heard some really good feedback so far from Mr. Agio and Ms. Cackness. And one of the, one of the comments that was made was by Abby Cackness, who said that it's really nice to have the instructional departments coming into their building and providing feedback. So when I say instructional departments, it's important that Ms. Morell from the Special Education Department is a part of this. It's important that, you know, Ms. Agia is a part of this with her, you know, ELL lens and Mr. DiRiso, her literacy lens. We will soon, we don't want to take her away from sort of establishing her role with Ms. Morell, but Ms. Gerard, we're going to be at some point soon bringing her along on these principal walks as well. So we're really excited, I'm really excited about them, and it's how we improve. It's one of the ways that we can improve here in the district. So that's, that's the principal walks. The last agenda item I have, and Chairman, I know you had asked for some data around our student attendance district-wide and by school. So before I give you the percentages by school and by district, this is, it's really, we're just in the process of really digging into this data, and the source of the data is Skyward. And Skyward is only as good as, the results from Skyward are only as good as the coding and the data that's put into it. So we're really going to have a much better view or picture of what attendance looks like as we get closer to October 1st. That October 1st date is when we need to submit to RIDE our numbers, basically.
May I ask you, on October 1st, are you reporting Skyward numbers?
So we're going to be reporting the numbers into Skyward that we've been, from the data that we've been putting into that, so.
What I'm saying, as you said, it, you know, that data depends as good as what it is, that's what you're going to be using anyway.
It is, yes.
So whatever you've got now.
So what we have now, it's what we have now.
Right, sure.
Now, there are, there's some caveats I'm going to throw into this, because when, when we look at what we have so far, we have instances where we have students that are on role, right, but they may not have attended yet. So in some instances, we may not have taken those students off role. What we like to do is we wait a period of time to see, because often, to start the school year, and even just periodically after vacation times, sometimes especially after our holiday break, we'll get students who may travel to another country, who may not come back right after the holiday break ends. So we want to make sure we take those situations into consideration. So what we have here, I think, is we, in some instances, a part of this data is we may have some students who are not here, they haven't been taken off the role because they're still technically enrolled in the school, but they're no-shows. That's one. Another caveat from this to consider is that we have a lot of students that have quarantined so far. And when I talk about the high school shortly, there've been a lot of cases of students quarantining at the high school. And when we code that, we have to make sure that we're going back into the coding and not coding those students as being absent. So they would be absent, but because they're quarantined and they're receiving their work through Google Classroom, then they would be coded as, as an excused absence, and it would be almost the same as an out-of-district-type situation.
Yeah, that sounds like you'd count them as attending.
Well, we.
Because they're studying at home.
And that's what we're going to go back into to make sure that, in fact, we're doing that. We may not be doing that right now. So that's why when I say we need to clean up some of this data, that's some of the data that we need to clean up. So I just wanted to mention those two examples first, and before I get to the numbers. So let me, let me just start. District-wide, 87% attendance rate. I'm going to start with the elementaries and then move to the middle and the high school. Vernon Heights, 87%. Coleman, 80%. Loeb Park, 90%. Harris, 85. Othier Citizens Campus, 87. Savoy, 92. Hamlet Middle School, 95. Villanova Middle School, 93. And Windsocket High School and Career Center is 71. So again, I wanted to throw that caveat out, especially for the high school numbers, because I'm pretty sure that that 71% is not an accurate reflection because of the coding, number one, and number two, students who may not have been taken off role that will be taken off role because they've been no-shows.
About district-wide, I think you guys.
District-wide is 87%.
So we don't have 58% absenteeism?
No, we don't. No, that's, no.
We have 13.
Correct.
Based on these numbers, but.
Correct.
The absenteeism most likely is lower than what was shown.
Absolutely. And we have, every school, every principal has been working on their attendance plans for the year. Each year, I ask the principals to submit to me a calendar that sort of breaks down the different parts of the school year, beginning with the summer, and what measures they're taking to try to increase student attendance through a variety of means. And, you know, Mr. Agio is here this evening, and since we're speaking about the high school, I know that, I don't know if, Jeff, if you want to say a few things about the measures that you're putting together at the high school that were not in place prior to this year with respect to, you know, focusing on student attendance and trying to support students and families.
So with a student population of between 1,700 and 1,800, it's taking us a little bit of time to figure out exactly who is a no-show versus who's chronically absent versus who's present every day. So we're working through that list with our guidance counselors. We cannot officially take them off role until we receive notification from the new district. So that's where we're holding the line with some of those students who may be trying to enroll in another district but have not followed the full process yet. I met with the middle school principals and assistant principals today about establishing an attendance team that will mirror what their, the work that they're doing at the middle school, so that it'll be something that's familiar, but it's also a process that's working at the middle level, so we're going to mirror a very similar process at the high school. The other thing that has become apparent is our, we have a tardy-to-school problem that we'll be working as a team to put a policy together that will be tied into our attendance team, but will also be tied into our administrative team and our guidance counselors to work with parents to get students to school on time. Also, we have changed the traffic pattern at the high school to help with the getting to school issues and the traffic that is happening on Cass Avenue. The new traffic pattern is going very well. I mean, it's helped our tardy policy, but all in all, I think the attendance team will be a nice way to open up more communication with, with parents. There'll be a several-tiered approach that we're going to use, which will include incentives, will include letters home, will include parent meetings, all of the above. So I'm confident that the next time we run the numbers, the percentage will be quite a bit higher, because I'm pretty sure that there's a lot more than 70% of students in the building. I haven't counted every one of them, but I'm pretty sure that there, that there are a lot more than 70% in our building.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask you a question?
Of course. Vice Chair Burke.
Mr. Agio, is there a sense of what grades are doing better than other grades, like is the freshman attendance seemingly better than juniors or?
I think it's a cross-the-board conversation. It seems like our freshmen are actually doing better with attendance, given that some of our high school students have been home for a long time before we came back to school. Re-establishing the routine has been, has been difficult. So we're going to try to tackle it from both ends, between the tardiness to school and really working on maybe moving back a routine 10 minutes to get to school on time and to really streamline what it looks like in the morning, when it's time to come in for breakfast, what it looks like in the hallways, to just making sure that everybody's where they need to be for 8 o'clock. I think that it's probably across the board, similar with our, with our older students on who's here and who's not. For some of them, we have previous patterns of attendance issues, so that'll probably be the top of the list for the attendance initiatives to start things off, and then we'll go from there as to what the data tells us. So those students that drive to school and are parking at the Career Center are, seem to be a little bit more punctual, because if not, they won't get a spot. So there's incentive there. So I would say that it, but across the board, there isn't one particular grade, so we're just going to look at all four grades, then when we disaggregate the data, if there are spots where we need to look at it a little bit closer, we will.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Agio, do you have a sense of how many students are quarantined at this moment?
We are averaging somewhere between 65 and 85 students a day quarantining. Of course, the information is difficult to have an up-to-the-minute answer to that because it's coming at all different times. So whether it's through contact tracing that the nurse is doing at the school level, whether it's information that's coming in from the Rhode Island Department of Health, or it's parents or students contacting us directly, it all, it's all going into a master sheet and then sent out that way. So the list is only as good as the information that we're receiving. So on any given day, it could be higher, it could be lower. So I'll give you an example. I received an email on my way here this evening where there's another 20 or 25 students that need to be placed in quarantine due to, due to a positive and close contacts. So we'll add them to the list, and then some of the other students we're waiting on are test results in some cases that are taking a long time before they return, as well as whether or not they're vaccinated and how that, how that changes the timeline for the students, so.
Do you know how many of those are vaccinated?
Unfortunately, the information on vaccination for those that have disclosed such information is on the low end. We're pushing really hard for the upcoming vaccination clinic that will be physically housed in the high school on the 29th, so we'll, we'll push hard on that information. And the students are still gaining an understanding of the, of the, what it means to be vaccinated when they have to quarantine or not quarantine, as the case may be. So on any given day, it could be, you know, it depends upon whether or not we receive the information, you know, the, when we had to quarantine the football team, the information that was received at the state level in regards to that student was much later, had we not had it from the parent. So if we're waiting for official communication, it's taking anywhere from four to seven days to receive those, those emails, and then we're waiting on, after the fact, the second negative in order for students to come back. So that's where our changes in coding will also have to happen, because if we don't know a student is quarantining or they're positive, they're just being marked absent because they're not coming to school because we haven't been notified, and then we go back after the fact and adjust what it says in Skyward.
It's so late, four to seven days, that's a whole week. So now you're going to have even more students quarantined because of contact.
Or, yes, or what it means is they've already quarantined and they can come back right after I get the email because it's, it's been that long. So it's literally on a case-by-case basis, depending upon how long they were in contact, what the contact was, was it in school, was it outside of school? So it's a very individual thing as to when, you know, what the timeline is for each student.
As Dr. McGee said, these students who are quarantined, are they included as attending? You're not looking at, do they make up the 71%? Or are they, are you treating them as if they're in school because they?
We're treating them as, as absent excused, but if the coding needs to be changed, we will, we will change. I know that there was some conversation about, about the coding needing to be changed, so we'll adjust as needed, because technically, present distance learning doesn't really exist because we're not offering distance learning, per se, in the, in the definition of what distance learning was before. Their, their work is posted on Google Classroom and their teachers are available, so we'll make sure that we're accurately monitoring what it, what it means to quarantine and what their absence is recorded in Skyward.
Quarantined and getting the materials and working off a platform, they're present. If you ask the, in terms of attendance, they should be included.
Correct, correct. And that part, if there is a silver lining, that part does seem to be working very well. During the pandemic, Google Classroom was something that the high school was able to utilize very well, so it's something the students are already very used to in regards to communication with teachers. So the academic part is going pretty well while they're quarantining. They're actively engaged as much as they can be. They're reaching out to teachers, so if there is a silver lining, it's that.
Mr. Chair. One follow-up question on that. With the students that are using Google Classroom who are quarantined, is there a way to verify that they're actually accessing Google Classroom? Because if we're going to reclassify them, should we reclassify them as present if they're not actually accessing the classroom? Just a thought.
Good question, and that's something that we've, that we've talked about, is how do we know? The fact that the teacher is sharing Google Classroom with them, how do we know that they're actually partaking in, in that? And I think that's something that we're going to need to, to explore, because that can skew the numbers as well. Where if we're counting students being present, but they haven't accessed the material, then, then that data's incorrect as well. So that is something that we were, we've been talking about, and we have to look at how we're going to figure that one out.
Will we have updated stats for our next meeting? Meeting in October?
Al?
Alvin, can you hear me? So, so I, yes, as updated as they can be, and I think it just, it's important to note that, that what you're receiving tonight is a snapshot as of today.
Right.
But attendance, what I think we're trying to express to the committee is, is, it's fluid in the sense that it's a snapshot as of today, but tomorrow, when we go back and recode because we found out the student was present, and we would rerun this report tomorrow, but as of today's data, it would show a different report. It's never 100% accurate because it's always moving. So in the 20-something years that I've been working with data state reporting between Connecticut and Rhode Island, it's always been a kind of like the question. It's never 100%. This is a snapshot as of today. A snapshot that we need to get, try and get as perfect as possible, and it's never 100% perfect, but the state has, has set an arbitrary date of October 1st and approximately March 13th to give you snapshots that that's the, what they consider quote-unquote "the accurate snapshot" of the data for all different state reporting. Next month, we will give you a report. It'll be updated, and it'll be a snapshot as of a certain date, and it'll be reflective of the day as the best information we have on that date. That's the way to look at it. It's the best information we have possible. It's very difficult here in Windsocket at the beginning of the school year to get a true, accurate snapshot at this point in time because of the transient nature of our student population. And to compound that, we now are dealing with COVID, and I don't, and the rules that RIDE has promulgated around the attendance structure, and Mr. Agio is correct, we did have one set of guidance. We had another set of guidance because they didn't give us updated guidance, so we went back to the present excused. And then recently, we confirmed with RIDE that, that we're going to use the model from last year, which is that you're distance learning present, distance learning absent. What we need to do as a district is figure out how we're going to capture that, accurately portray it to the public, to the school committee at large.
The only reason I'm asking for updated numbers is that Dr. McGee said these are basically incomplete, our best guess right now. Whatever it is come October, that should be, at least you have a better idea in terms of how you're putting the numbers together, whatever it is, it is. We could have higher lack of attendance. That number could go up or down, depending on where we are at the beginning of October. I understand that. So whatever number that was sent to RIDE, those are more or less the official numbers that we're going to be using. So we'll wait for those. But right now, the absenteeism overall in the district is 13%, with potentially better attendance based on the facts that we're not sure about.
Correct.
Right? So we'll see what it is next month, which will represent the numbers you're sending to RIDE.
Yeah, as we get closer to October 1st, we, we will spend, have a closer look at the numbers for all the state reporting, including the attendance, and that's something we monitor closely at the superintendent's level, at the building level, the business office, because it affects curriculum and affects a lot of different things, so.
No, I don't like a 13% absenteeism overall. Some schools we have here in the 90s, but it's a lot better than some other districts. This could have been a disaster. It's not. I think we're doing a great job in. I think we're doing a great job in your putting together. I think it's going to- Any other questions, comments for Mr. Giu or Dr. McGee? Are you done?
I am done, thank you. Yes.
I'm sorry.
I think, yes, I am done.
You're done?
Yes, yes.
He says he's done.
I tried to keep it short.
I'll make a motion to receive and place on file a superintendent's report. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, we'll go into the school subcommittee reports, and we'll begin with, I believe, Mrs. Kepiscus.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's going to be a very short report, as I was unable to attend the meeting. The first meeting occurred on Thursday, September 9th. It was done remotely as we've taken to doing the CLACs. Ms. Morell was a willing leader in my absence. She indicated it was a small attendance. There were only about five parents. She indicated to me that they covered introductions, they discussed the opening of schools, the instructional mode at Burnin' and, I think it's Model, at Burnin' and Coleman, kindergarten transition, new vans, the apartment at the high school, the therapy dog returning, ADA compliance audit, case managers sending out contact information and the search for TAs. She asked if any of the parents had questions, and there were none. The next meeting is, I'm not sure, the first Thursday in October, 6:00 p.m. If you want to be invited to join virtually, all you need to do is shoot me an email at my school committee email address, elkepiscus@onesocketschools.com, and I'll make sure you're included. Thank you.
Any questions, comments for Mrs. Kepiscus? Motion received and placed on file, the CLAC update. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leclerc. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, we'll go into the facilities update. This past Monday, Mr. Leclerc and I attended a facilities subcommittee meeting, and I'll ask our director of operations to give us a summary recap of that meeting.
Thank you, Chairman. So the meeting did occur on Monday. The first item on the agenda for a discussion was ADA compliance. That's going to be a standing item that we're emphasizing here in the district. And it was just an update that it's part of the five-year capital plan with some enhanced features to really take a solid look at some of the things that we need to do here in the district that have just kind of fallen behind here over the years due to various reasons. Next, we talked about facilities projects, high school control pumps of the heating system, the high school thunder mist project, which is in the nurse's office. We talked about the second floor library and bathrooms regarding some renovations that may need to occur or some repairs. We talked about the Burnin' Heights Elementary School roof and some repairs that need to occur there. Playground, the ongoing playground repairs, high school handicap ramp, which was completed and we've taken off the agenda. Parking lot repairs and some of the needs across the district, and there are some significant needs there. The summer street school and our intentions to turn that into an area to store records. High school auditorium project in terms of renovations. RGV projects and contracts, which more or less highlight some of the projects I just listed earlier in terms of what RGV's role is in those projects and how they're managing or assessing them for us. It'll be removed from the agenda, but the next item was the trans-pro vans. The third van was approved by the full school committee, and thank you again for that. And that will be arriving in a couple of weeks and put to good use in the high school. We briefly talked about the five-year capital plan in terms of the status, and we were at our stage one application being submitted, and we're moving on to stage two. We talked about the building committee membership, which I believe there is a full agenda item this evening. We talked about the process we were in and the status that we were at in terms of the inspection reports within the district for fire, building, electrical, safety, security, and radon, which are annual inspections we conduct here. Transportation, we provided a brief update as to the status of where we were regarding our transportation status, regarding drivers, how many buses we had, and dismissal and arrival time throughout the district. And we also briefly discussed the district's attempt to review how traffic flow works at many of our school locations and what we could do to improve the traffic flow with the emphasis on faster dismissal and arrival times along with student safety. And the last item on the agenda was the Trust Safety Committee, which there was no update because the committee meeting was canceled for the month of September. That concludes my update for the facility subcommittee, unless there's any questions of the committee.
Any questions for Mrs. Notoriani? Pretty much you've covered everything we were talking about. There are some items that we couldn't get to in detail because we're still waiting for information. Once we get that, we'll deal with that in the upcoming meetings.
Absolutely, Chairman.
Motion to receive and place on file a facilities update. Do we have a second? Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, we'll go to the health and wellness update. I'll turn it over to Vice Chair Burke and Mrs. Costa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The health and wellness subcommittee met this past Monday, September 20th, at 4:00 in Room 124 of the Hamlet Building. It was our first live, in-person meeting since at least March of 2020. So it was great to see all the folks in attendance, folks that we've only been seeing on Zoom. I was kind of struck though, seeing everybody live, they all looked younger to me, so that was a good thing, you know? By the way, at any health and wellness subcommittee, we always concern ourselves with three areas of concern: nutrition, physical activity, and mental health. On the first item of nutrition, Ashley Plant, One Sock's sedaxal director, talked about the summer meals program that we just completed, as well as the status of the meals program going on in our schools. The summer meals program seemed to be quite a success because using a moving van throughout five or six different sites in the city, the seductive summer meals program fed 16,886 breakfasts, as well as 17,955 lunches. Because that was really quite impressive in how successful that summer program is. We're also now dealing with the present lunch, breakfast and lunch programs in our schools. Just like last year, all right, our breakfast and lunch meals are free. They're free to all students. She has discovered that, for the most part, the elementary students seem to be participating with greater participation, less so in middle school and less so in the high school. So we probably want to encourage more of the middle school students and the high school students to participate in the breakfast and/or lunch program. For the elementary schools, breakfast and the other schools, breakfast is either in the classroom, what's called grab-and-go, or traditional in cafeteria, all right? Lunch is obviously in all the cafeterias of the school. So related to the lunch program, we also are involved with URI's SNAP Ed program. And the SNAP Ed program from URI provides educational materials dealing with the fresh fruit and vegetable programs that are part of our lunch menus, I believe, in all our schools. Dealing also with nutrition, the Rhode Island Healthy Schools Coalition, which sends out a newsletter to us every month, is sponsoring a special Rhode Island health and wellness breakfast, which they did not have last year live, and it's going to occur on October 19th. The school district has bought a table that we will be in attendance, and also it will be livestreamed for those who cannot be in attendance. Our second item is obviously physical activity. Since we've just gotten back in-person schooling, all right, things are slowly coming to fruition. It's been a while since all students have been together. In the past, we've had great involvement with programs like recess rocks and box. We are hoping that as the school year progresses, that we can get these programs back into our schools, back to our schools with students and staff. They were very popular two years ago when we were originally in person before COVID. So we're hoping that we can bring these programs back because they do help address some of the physical activity besides phys ed of our students. In fact, two years ago, Hamlet, Hamlet Elementary School received a special award from the BOX program, and so that was great. And hopefully, when the time is right, some of these programs can come back. The last item of our agenda deals with mental health, and we heard on this topic from G. D. DeBello of the work of the Project Aware program. One particular note about this program this year, he introduced us to a program called "You Are Not Alone," which I believe is visible throughout the schools. And basically, it's a cue code, and those of you who are in the know, put your phone right up to it, and it'll tell you all the resources that are available to you to deal with any issues and questions about mental health concerns. So that seems to be a pretty good program that's been involved within our schools. She also discussed that the restorative practice program is continuing, and most of our schools have been, received professional development of their program. And finally, we've also had discussion about the social-emotional skill development that has occurred in the summer and is also being part of professional development in our schools. Finally, in a discussion on the idea of health, we are health and wellness, by the way, we talked about the vaccine site availability for both staff and students, and the details of that I'm going to provide a little bit later on our agenda. We adjourned around 5:45, so it was already substantial meeting, and we set our next meeting on November 15th. And I believe that gives in pretty good detail what happened at the health and wellness subcommittee. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chair Burke, I want, Mrs. Costa, do you have anything to add to that?
No, I unfortunately was unable to attend the meeting that day, so.
Any questions for Vice Chair Burke? Again, many thanks for that report. I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the health and wellness update. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leclerc and Mrs. Costa. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, we will go to the curriculum update for the meeting that was held on September 21st, and I'll ask Dr. Holt to give us an update.
Thank you, Chairman. Make sure my mic is on. Yep, excellent. So our curriculum subcommittee met yesterday at 2:00 p.m. in Hamlet 124. We had four items on our agenda for discussion. The first item was the freshman academy. Mr. Giu gave an update on the implementation of the freshman academy this school year, which is the first year of having the academy. He noted that the administrative team made some adjustments to the teacher duty schedules to allow for a planning block for the teaching teams. Ms. Neal and Ms. Donato have provided an introductory PD to the teachers on co-planning and co-teaching, explaining the six different models of co-teaching and describing when it's appropriate to use one of the models. Mr. Giu also described a shift in the assignment of the dean of students, moving away from having the deans be assigned by last name, but by grade level. So the ninth-grade academy has a dean all to themselves, while he also works with 11th grade as well. The second item on our agenda was an update on two-way immersion dual-language program. Ms. Agia has been working very hard to recruit members for recruiting stakeholders to be a part of the two-way immersion dual-language program planning committee. Say that a few times fast. She's seeking to get about 10 members. Right now, I think we've only got about three or four, so we're still actively seeking teachers, parents, and other stakeholders, administrators. The team will meet bi-monthly and will be addressing curriculum selection for the dual-language program, determining the particular model for instruction to be used, whether we're looking to displace a current teacher and bring in duly-certified teachers, or are we adding a duly-certified teacher into the mix of the team that's already there. They'll be visiting other dual-language programs to see how it's being done there. Currently, the district has one pre-K dual-language classroom that's housed at Porthier Elementary School, has 18 students. 15% are English-speaking, 50% are Spanish-speaking, and approximately 50% of the students are also a part of the inclusion program, so they're students who have identified with special needs. We're hoping, our goal is to have two classes next year in kindergarten and continue to build the dual-language program from pre-K to 12th grade. Third on our agenda was discussions on the adoption of high-quality instructional materials. As the committee is aware, RIDE has required that districts offer high-quality instruction materials for all students in grades K to 12 for ELA in math by the start of the 23 school year. Currently, we are working in our high school, our ELA and math department are working on their selection process. Our ELA department has selected two curriculum to pilot. One is My Perspectives from Savis. The other is Into Literature from HMH. They're piloting those curricula in grades nine, 10, and 11, and things are going pretty well. Our math department is partnering with the Department of Ed and Ed Reports. Ed Reports is a program that has been selected by the state of Rhode Island to critique or evaluate curricula and determine if they're what they call greenlit. And if it's greenlit, they say they are high quality and makes sense for us to be implementing in our schools. That work is ongoing. We actually have a meeting this Friday for the math department. The last item on the agenda was the discussion of the Right to Read Act. Mr. Rizzo presented a description of the Rhode Island Right to Read Act and discussed clearly the ramifications this act has for the teaching and learning of reading in the district. Mr. Rizzo noted that this act has a shift for the focus of reading instruction to address the science of reading through a structured literacy approach. This approach addresses each strand of what they call Scarborough's reading rope. That rope includes phonological and phonemic awareness, sound symbol correspondence or phonics, syllables, morphology, semantics, and syntax. We're very proud to let you know that 104 of our teachers were trained last school year to be what they call pathway to proficiency. There are two levels of requirements under this state act. One is proficient and one is aware. We trained 104 teachers last year. We are training 114 more teachers this year and moving right along and offering for teachers or administrators who need awareness to receive training through Bridge RI. We also have a group of teachers who have been enrolled at URI for the dyslexia program, and we're very excited and very proud of the work. Mr. Rizzo has led a grant that has allowed us to be ahead of the game, so we just want to say thank you and know that we're moving quite well towards the legislation that has come out. And then the last item was to select a date for the next meeting, and after much debate, we've decided on November 16th at 2:00 p.m. at Hamlet 124. That concludes-
Thank you, Dr. Holt. I want to say that all the items on our agenda were very interesting, especially the Right to Read Act. And I'd like to ask Dr. McGee and Mr. Rizzo, and maybe you, Dr. Holt, is to have a presentation for the school committee because, as we know, if our students can't read by the time they're in the third grade, we may have lost them. And some of the methods, interestingly enough, some of the methods that are being used are kind of old. They go back to how us older people were taught to read, with sounds, with words, actually video that I was shown of a student actually hammering and banging the letters and the words, the syllables, really gives you a tactile approach to sounding words. And frankly, that's how you learn how to say a word and how you get to finally read. So I would really appreciate a down-to-earth presentation of Right to Read at one of our school committees. I would like that. Any other questions, comments for Dr. Holt? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the curriculum update. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Burke and Mrs. Costa. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, we'll go to the fiscal update. Mr. Perrier. Mr. Perrier. Anyone? 3.6 million that we're transferring, these items could have been transferred last year, but we did not. So it showed that we had this surplus, but those monies could have been transferred at that time. Anyone else? And I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the financial update. Is there a second? Second by Mrs. Costa. Dr. McGee roll call.
Chairman Bourgey.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke. Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, our last, Ms. Morell to give us the special education update.
Mr. Chairman, right now, we are in the process of reconciling the special education enrollment census with the general enrollment census. We should have that completed for the October 1st snapshot. That's kind of what Mr. Notariani was discussing earlier with the enrollment numbers. Next month, we should have all the numbers of special education students from pre-K to 12 and our audit district numbers. We are also in the process of moving to an electronic records in the special education department. This is going to allow easier access for the student files for our staff in multiple buildings and reduce the amount of files that they have to carry. And also, the DLM, the Dynamic Learning Map Results, that's the test for the alternative assessment, will be sent home to parents this week, and it was the assessment that was administered this last school year. Any questions?
Anyone?
Chairman, Vice Chair Burke. Ms. Morell, who was the, what students took the Dynamic Learning Map assessment?
The assessment is given to the students on alternate assessment, so the students that are in our severe intellectual disabilities classrooms, usually students in grades, I believe it's 3, 5, and 11. Yes?
Anyone else? I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the special education update. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leclerc, Dr. McGee.
Chairman Bourgey.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
We have no unfinished business, so let's go to new business. The first item is a discussion and approval of the building committee membership for the five-year capital plan for RIDE regulations. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leclerc. The five-year capital plan RIDE requires that each district has a building committee separate from the facilities committee. This is a committee that will be taking a look at the elements of the five-year plan, and once that decision is made, that will go to the Subcommittee, the Facility Subcommittee, and then to the full school committee. So I'll turn it over to you, Dr. McGee, and Mr. Perrier.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as you just said, the Department of Ed requires that districts establish a building committee for their, the implementation, the creation and the implementation of their five-year capital plan. So we had an existing building committee. However, we have had to make some modifications to it because there are some members of this committee who are no longer either in the district or are just no longer in positions of administration, if you will. So the changes that we've made, we've added Mr. Leclerc to the building committee.
Why don't you list the whole committee?
Yeah, I was going to start with the new members, and then I was going to go through the others. So we've added Mr. Leclerc as a member-at-large, seeing as he's a member of the school committee and is a co-chair of the facility Subcommittee. We've also added Ms. Morell because of, obviously, her work in special education population and the fact that in our five-year capital plan that will be created, there is a special education, you know, piece to that, a large piece to that as well. We've also added Garrett Mansiri as a member-at-large in addition for his, you know, his knowledge of, you know, of capital projects and things like that. The other members of the committee who are existing members, myself, Superintendent, Chairman Bourgey as the chairman of the school committee, Mr. Notariani as our chief operating officer, Mayor Baldelli-Hunt being the mayor of the city, Ms. Renegaldo, who is the principal of Hamlet Middle School, Dr. Holt, who is our Director of Curriculum and Development, is also serving on that committee, Mr. Perrier, our Director of Finance, and Mr. Dan Peliquin, who is a member of the community who has architectural and engineering and construction experience. So that was one of the additions that we made last time around to get somebody from the community who had that specific experience, being a former, you know, engineer and architect. So we've added him to the committee. So that's the list of the committee members. Mr. Chairman.
Any questions, comments for Dr. McGee? Dr. McGee roll call.
Chairman Bourgey.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Next, our last, Vice Chair Burke to lead a discussion on vaccine availability for students over 12 and staff members.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe that the more ways you can convey information, the better we might be able to improve the vaccination rates in our city, in our community, and among our students. So a lot of this information has already been available in one way or another, but I thought here at the school committee meeting presenting it also is another area where we can get the message out. We've already heard that in the school district that the high school, under the help of the Department of Health, will be having a vaccination clinic on September 29th, which is a Wednesday, and that'll be from 8:00 to 11:00. So all students above the age of 12 and staff who are available can afford themselves of this clinic. It's during the school day. They're asking that you make an appointment, but obviously, they will also accept people who don't have appointments. Okay, so please write that down, September 29th, 8:00 to 11:00. Also, we're also going to provide another clinic here in the middle school, and that will take place on Saturday, September 25th, from the hours of 8:00 to 1:00. That'll also be presented by the Department of Health under their program called the Wellness Project. And once again, the Pfizer vaccine is what's going to be presented, and it is for students 12 and older. So once again, here's another available option for our students to receive the vaccine, the first dose at least. Also, as you know, the city runs a program every Wednesday. Every Wednesday afternoon from 3:00 to 7:00, it's at the Monsignor Gallery School, which is part of the All Trinity Church, and that's, they're presenting the Pfizer vaccine there. No appointment is needed. No appointment is needed. So here are three possibilities now for our students and their families, all right, to somehow maybe get the vaccine. This is vaccine availability. Also, CBS, as you know, also offers the vaccine. There's one right down Cass Ave, right near the high school. I believe you need an appointment, or you can get the vaccine from them. And by the way, all these vaccines are free, okay? They're all provided free. And finally, we also know that Thunder Miss continues to offer the vaccine free at their Clinton Street office. So there's a lot of availabilities to get the vaccine. It's free. I don't want to get into the politics of it, but I would encourage those who are eligible and able to think about getting the vaccine and keeping these areas in mind. I know Dr. McGee sent out in his newsletter to the families the two dates in the high school and the middle school. So once again, the more information we can get out of them, the more places where it's available, I'm hoping the more we can increase the vaccination rate in the city of Lynn Socket. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for that, Vice Chair Burke. As you said, the more we get the word out, the often we get the word out, hopefully, families will take advantage of the vaccination sites and get the vaccine. It's a very important step in terms of, you're never going to defeat COVID, but we can certainly mitigate the impact of that virus, and that's what the vaccines are all about. It's not going to prevent it. It's never been intended to prevent the disease, but it is there to mitigate the effects of the virus. So hopefully, families will take advantage of these clinics and these opportunities to get vaccinated. Anyone else have any comments? Then I'll, then we don't have to do anything. It was for discussion, but it's discussion. Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the fiscal '21 fund transfers. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leclerc and Mrs. Costa. Dr. McGee, Mr. Perrier.
I'll take this one, Dr. McGee. Under the school committee this evening is the fund transfer request for the close of fiscal year '21. There are three fund transfer requests, one to the building capital fund for 2.15 million, one to the medical reserve account for 1.1 million, and one to the technology capital account for 2.1 million. Now, this is a maximum transfer that the school committee is authorizing me to make. One of the important things that I want to kind of point out for this fiscal year, we have two important fiscal things coming to the finance office on my radar right now. First one being SER III. RIDE still hasn't released the funding for SER III, but we are expecting it soon, and we are going to work on putting together a plan for it. SER III, some allowable expenses, touch on some of the things we're transferring money into right now, which is technology and building improvements. And the other big one we have our eye on is the development of the five-year capital plan, which we mentioned a little bit earlier this evening. Once we have an idea of how we end up fleshing out SER III, and once we have an idea of what our five-year capital plan has looked like, I think at that point, it'll be a good time to go back and look at what we transferred here this evening. I think the important thing we want to take care of tonight is to get this money transferred into a place where we still have access to it. And I alluded to it a little bit earlier this evening during my fiscal update. For example, if we put money into OPEB, we're not going to have access to it because it's going to be locked into the account there. So these transfers, I think, a way to look at them is just a kind of placeholder until we get, develop these other things that we're working on. Then, once we have an idea of how we're going to be spending and what we're going to need for those other projects we're looking at, I think it'll be a great time to come back to the school committee and then allocate these funds based on the plans that we have for moving Division 1 Socket forward. So I don't know if anybody has anything to add to that.
The thought is, maybe you can talk about the rationale for the amounts for the different entries that you're making.
Again, these are kind of just standard amounts that I put in, and as I was mentioning before, we're really looking more at a placeholder-type situation till we get these other two big fiscal pieces solved. Then, at that point, then we can really have a good discussion about where we want these funds to go going forward.
Is there a reason why medical, the medical reserve is going to be 1.15 billion versus something else that might be?
There's no reason. It's just, again, an estimate for right now, and it's something that we're going to revisit again down the road once we finalize SER III and the five-year capital plan. Once we have those pieces in place, then we're going to know where our holes are, so to speak. If we decide to use SER III for, like, for example, if we buy $1 million worth of technology, when we get through planning it and we get it approved by RIDE, we can come back and say, hey, you know, we put in $1 million in SER III, let's move that $1 million out of medical, or, excuse me, out of the technology fund and point it towards building capital, for example.
I think the areas where we're pigeonholing or where we're transferring the monies to, certainly medical makes a lot of sense because that is always the big unknown. And also, technology is another important one because we know we've always got issues or requirements that we've got to update or get new equipment, and capital certainly makes sense because, as you said, we're developing the capital plan, and we don't know when the SER funds are coming. So to me, those three entries make a lot of sense. Any comments, questions for?
Mr. Chairman, just one question for that. The capital fund, capital building fund of 2.15 million, that's a five-year capital building plan. Is this money being allocated over five years, or is it right at the start?
Well, it's going to be allocated based on when we actually execute it. The five-year capital plan is really just kind of a diagram for how we're going to be spending our capital money, and then depending on what projects we pick off, that's when the money's going to be spent. So we also have some other things, and we're going to talk about it in finance Subcommittee and the building committee as well, about how things are going to work in terms of how we're going to fund some of these projects, what are our options, and we're going to get into that a little bit more. And, and, and we're gonna get into that a little bit more, uh, detail. And then that's gonna kind of inform how we move forward with spending this money.
Anyone else? Dr. McGee roll call.
Chairman Bourget.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus. Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclair.
Yes.
Next, I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the new position of systems application specialist and to post said position. Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Dr. McGee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So each of you has, uh, in your, uh, on your screen, uh, two, two documents, uh, job description for the position, and then a, um, the second, if you scroll down, the fiscal impact. So I'm gonna start with the job description. So this, we're, we're, we're looking to, for your approval to, to add through the use of SER II funds. So this would not be, um, local funds. This would be through SER II, and it would be for two years, um, a systems application specialist, which basically, what, what we're looking at is data coordinator for the district. Um, if you look at the, uh, the description, it's a 12-month position, 40 hours per week. Um, this person would be reporting to the chief operating officer. And some of the duties and responsibilities are, uh, to provide system support for the various, uh, district systems and applications. With the, the advent of, of COVID, um, over the last year and a half, our district has had to utilize, um, many more student online applications for instruction, for teaching and learning. Our teachers have also had to utilize, um, many of these applications, most of which we're continuing to use with our students, even though we're in person. So it's important to have, uh, someone in the district that can really focus much of their energies on that area. Some of the other responsibilities would be our communication system, coordinating our communication system throughout the district, uh, which would be our district websites, our staff and parent notifications, uh, the mobile app which we have, and as well as, uh, the, the other modes of, of, of communication at our schools, such as television, et cetera. This person would be providing backup and support to the automation specialist here in the district. I'm not gonna go through all of those roles and responsibilities, but, uh, this position is, is a position where it's necessary because it's taking things off of the plates of other, um, employees in the technology department, where, uh, they can focus much more on sort of their specific roles and responsibilities, the positions that they occupy currently. So that's the, those would be some of the duties. And again, there, there is a, a series of approximately 14 there. The fiscal impact for this position would be $87,391. And again, this is, is not coming out of the local budget. It's coming out of our SER II funds, which again, those SER II funds are used for a variety of things, specifically to, you know, closing, uh, learning gaps for our students, as well as, there's, there's also a technology, uh, component to that SER II, um, as well. So that, that's where we would be looking to, um, take the money from as we move forward. And again, it would be for two years. And after two years, you know, much like the positions that we've established through SER II, um, and that we may establish as we move into SER III soon, um, this fall and this winter, um, you know, after the, the second year, um, you know, to, to try to sustain it, we would basically need to look for the funds within, within the local budget. But for now, it's a great opportunity for us to improve upon, uh, our data collection. We talked a little bit about it this, uh, this evening earlier with respect to, to attendance. It's just an opportunity for us to really, um, strengthen our data collection across the board in the district. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any kind of questions? Dr. McGee roll call.
Chairman Bourget.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus. Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclair.
Yes.
Last item on our agenda is the discussion on the status of Windsocket Education Department policies. And I'll lead that discussion. I know that over time that we've, we've, we've had needs for certain policies that we should have. Thank you for sending, uh, that list. I know Mrs., you probably got it from Mrs. Kepiscus, uh, because those are the similar ones that she has. But it's very important that some of these may have been put on the back burner as a result of some of the COVID issues we had to deal with, uh, the contracts that we, that we've been working on for the last two months. But also, the, some of these have been sitting there and waiting. We need to get these done. We have a meeting on October 8th, I guess. Is that it? October 8th, October 7th. I would like to see drafts of these policies in the hands of, of the subcommittee so that, that those could be finalized, could be sent to the school committee, because there's quite a few of them. And based on that list, I wanna make sure that nothing falls, uh, between the cracks, continues to be put on the last, on the, on the back burner, that they're very important. I know we've, we may have, and as the committee looks at this, the subcommittee looks at that, there may be some other policies we should have that are not on that list. So, um, it's, it's incumbent upon our, our, our legal team to put, to, to get drafts. And I know the directors have sent information to, to our, to our attorneys. And frankly, you should have that information. Now, if you don't, you can't find it, or you lost it, or you dog ate it, whatever happened to it, I wanna make sure that you contact Dr. McGee, my, you can call me, you can call Mrs. Kepiscus, who should chair the committee, or, and, and Vice Chair Burke, to make sure we have all the, you have all the information to draft these policies. These have gotta get drafted. They have to get passed by the committee, the subcommittee, and then we have to get them on our docket, on our agenda, so that we can pass them. They're very, very important, uh, and we need to have this thing pronto. This has gotta go to the front, to the front door. Anyone else have any thoughts? Mrs. Kepiscus, I know you've got thoughts.
No, I, I mean, my, my thought is, actually, my thought is general. We started an overhaul of the policies in the district. When I came on board on my first term, I'm now halfway through my second term, almost halfway through my second term, when Joe Cooper was our attorney. And Joe left, and I think what left with him was the impetus to get the policies done. And we're still kind of waiting on some policies we've talked about since my first term. And I'm, I'm frustrated because I keep canceling meetings because I don't have policies to present. And I asked if I can write them, and I was told no. So I, I don't, I don't know what to do at this point. I'm, I'm just, I guess I'm expressing my frustration that I would like some of these to move forward at this point.
But that comment was made to, uh, to our lead attorney. And I expect that the drafts should be in our hands, should be in the hands of the subcommittee at least the weekend before the, the, the meeting day. They have to be rushed. These things have gotta get done so the committee can, can finalize them. I don't know what stage of preparation they're in, uh, but we've gotta get them done. And there's no more waiting. We, like Mrs. Kepiscus said, that we've been waiting for certain policies, and some are very old. And I know we've gotten some out, but there are a lot, there's at least six, seven that are on that list. And there may be a couple more that we don't have on that list yet. I know, uh, one of the policies that, uh, our lead attorney was talking about wasn't on that list. So there's a message here. It's very important for the school committee to finally get these policies, for us to, to review them, to vote on them, and to make sure, uh, they're on the books.
Mr. Chair.
Costa.
So with Lynn being frustrated, and, and it's been like, this is my, I'm halfway through my first term, and if she's been here now, this is halfway through her second term, is there a way that we can make this, like, happen so that way we're not waiting till, uh, her third term?
That's what we're doing right now. Um, I'm, I'm putting every, I'm, I'm, I'm really making sure that our attorneys understand that this has gotta be a priority. So you can certainly let Miss Rappel know that this is very, very important. Uh, and then we'll be, we'll be monitoring this because we've been waiting. And I understand why there's been a delay, at least in the last few months. But this, some of these policies, it's well over a year, uh, that we've been waiting for them, and some may be even two years, that we just haven't gotten there. And that's one of the most important things that we've gotta have. School committees have to have certain policies in accordance with RIDE. Some of these are lacking. So let's get the drafts done. Let's get them prepared. And it, like I said, if you're, if you're missing any information, let us know because I know the directors have been sending information, once, twice, three times, whatever. This is not new. It's not anything new. But if you're missing something, please get ahold of us, the collective us, so we can get you the information to draft the policies. Any other thoughts? That's all I have. Since there's nothing else on our agenda, I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting at 8:22 PM. Is there a second?
Second.
Favor sing and fire, I sang aye.
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 We are adjourned.